Want to move up item five point one, basically to right now. Item five point one to right now.
Would be the final orders resolutions written community. Yeah, the final order, the PUD on the Devil's Lake Golf and Racket Club townhouses. As I recuse myself for personal reasons during the deliberation, I'm going to turn this part of it over to Mr. Long.
So, we don't actually have a script for the final order tonight, so it's, you can just read the title from the agenda.
I can just add that the only thing you really need to check for is make sure there's been no ex parte communications since the tentative oral decision was made.
Has there been any ex parte communications?
No.
All right. This is a final order twenty fifteen dash oh five, file PUD twenty fifteen dash oh one and SUB twenty fifteen dash oh one, amending the plan unit development par- partial subdivision plat. To amend the master plan for the Devil's Lake Golf and Racket Club townhouse originally recorded in eighteen eighty-four to remove approximately one point zero nine acres comprised of thirteen lots and portions of tracks A and B common area. The applicant also requests to replat of thirteen, let's see, thirteen lots and portions of common tracks into one lot to allow development of a twenty-nine unit apartment complex. The subject property is on the east side of northeast Devil's Lake Boulevard, north of Highway one oh one, in the multifamily residential RM zone. The applicant is Joe Barnes and the property owner is Gary Peters, or either Charlene Peters, trustee. There was a tentative decision on August eighteenth, twenty fifteen, and this is for approval with conditions. Everybody doing motion.
Mr. Chair, before you do the motion, at your seat tonight, there's actually, there's two documents. They're both say exhibit A. There are two versions of the conditions that would go with this final order. The two versions are of condition number one, which relates to the reconstruction of the access street through the, through the property. And just to refresh your memory, I've got a couple of slides from Bev Nicholson's presentation when she did this. This is showing Forty-seventh Street, basically, West Devil's Lake Boulevard is at your back looking at this, and this is Forty-seventh going into the, the property, and then the, the access then curves off to the right. And you can see here, here is the curve off to the right past the existing houses there. As I said, the draft conditions of approval that you have relate to reconstruction of Forty-seventh and end of Windward Place. In both versions, reconstruction has to be completed to the satisfaction of the city engineer prior to occupancy of, of any of the buildings in the, on the site of the one point oh nine acre out parcel. In the longer version, there's some additional language beginning on line ten that says, "Street construction shall be secured with an executed contract for construction of required improvements within enforceable timeframe of development for construction of the improvements consistent with the occupancy prohibition above. Financial security for construction, one hundred and ten percent cost, and maintenance, ten percent cost shall be required. The contract and security shall be in a form and amount acceptable to the city engineer and city attorney." The city engineer and the public works director don't feel that additional language is necessary. And there were questions being raised whether there's any authority for requiring that. And I'll say that there is not, there's not specific authority saying that we can require a bond in this situation, but there is general authority under the PUD approval terms where one of the approval criteria is that it can't be unreasonable impacts from construction. And I know you were concerned about the impacts on that, on that street for construction traffic and then the other traffic going through there. So this was put in basically as an additional means of ensuring that there aren't those, that basically the road doesn't get ruined and then not rebuilt. Again, the city engineer and the public works director feel it's not necessary that with the authority or the, or the condition saying that you can't occupy the buildings until the road is completed to the city engineer's satisfaction, that a violation of that can be enforced as a violation of the final order and it gets cited for a thousand dollar a day fine for every day that, that's not done. So if the property owner was to let someone move in before the road was completed, that would be a violation and be, you know, subject to fines. So essentially, it comes down to, do you feel like the city engineer and the public works director do that, that the, the ability to basically cite them, to cite the property owner is sufficient, or would you be happier or feel better with the requirement of contract and the, the bonding requirement?
As commissioners had a chance to read these.
Yes.
What are your feelings?
If I could just ask, who wrote these? Where did they come from?
The, it's sort of a committee thing. The, the short version, I believe, was written by the city engineer. Is that right, Kate? Or did Deb write them?
I think that Deb and the city engineer wrote them together.
Okay. And then I think the additional, the, the long version, the added language came from the city attorney.
And the longer version was the one that was in our packet.
Longer version is the one that's in your packet, but the concern was raised after the packet went out, so that's why you have both versions now.
Does having it in there make anything else more difficult within the PUD approval regulations that are currently, would be upheld? Is it like a double? I don't know how to say it.
I'm not sure what you're saying. The effect of having it in there makes it more expensive for the developer, because they have to buy the bond, and there's a process in that. It, as, on the other side, it's, it's another tool for making sure that the road improvement happens, but there, there is some question whether, at least in the applicant's mind, whether there's any authority for that and, you know, potentially is the ground for an appeal to not have, to have that in there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The, the thing that I think might be important, although with the, providing the approval for occupancy is pretty strong, I'm thinking also of the PUD and the people who are already living there and some guarantee for them or not, guarantee is a stronger word than I'm thinking of, but perhaps a timeline might be helpful or about approximately when, when those road improvements might be made. Because, and what I'm thinking of is that those streets, particularly Windward Place, is degraded and with the, with the construction trucks going back and forth, it's going to be further degraded. And at some point, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be difficult to get, to drive on that for, if you have a regular vehicle, a car, family type vehicle. And so I'm, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking of the worst things that could happen is somehow the construction gets held up for who knows what reason, and then the road's not improved. I don't know if there's an answer to this question except a timeframe.
Obviously, that's a possibility, that, you know, there could be a problem and, you know, that partway through the project or something, the developer walks away, there's always that risk, I guess. Absent that, I mean, obviously, the developer wants to get in, get the work done and, you know, get the apartments rented as fast as he can so to start recovering his costs. So, but there's always the possibility of some catastrophe or something, but in the normal course of business, presumably, it would, it would keep going.
What potential would having a bond have for delaying the project? Is, is there a certain amount of time it takes to apply for that and get it in place?
All, all he needs at this point, once he gets, gets through this, is to apply for his building permit.
I was thinking about the financial security and arranging all of that.
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing it.
I was thinking about the financial security and arranging all of that for the road construction.
But, they were having done it, I don't know how long that might take, presumably, it would, it would impose some, some time delay of some kind, but.
Personally, I'm happy with the shorter version.
Have there been any issues in the past where this added, these added statements were needed or that arose that could have helped the situation been better? Previously, where the PUD codes weren't really enforced, where this would have helped the situation?
I can't think of any offhand. There have been some situations, not exactly like this, where there has been a bond requirement, but I'm not sure in the time that I've been here, and it's almost sixteen years now, that we've ever called a bond.
My thought also about the timeline and, and the cost, I'm also fine with the shorter version if we can help me find a way through this, actually getting the road built. The initial expense and thought to the builder was for the land and for the building. And now that we have added the street to his plans, which I don't know if they were in the beginning or not to make the improvements, then I'm not quite sure, you know, about, you know, about how this can all come together financially. I mean, I'm, that's his business, but I'm still, I'm worried about the road and getting it in, add it.
Well, can it be controlled under site plan review? So getting a timeline for the road through site plan?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of what you said.
Is there a way to put a timeline when it comes before site plan review for the plans if they decide to build?
Site plan approval is good for two years, and so, you know, that's pretty much taken care of, so there'd be a better two-year timeline for that.
I know if I'm the contractor, I don't want to have to put a road in and heavy trucks break it down than have to spend, kind of redoing it.
That's a judgment call for the developer when he wants to put it in. The, the way the condition is written, it can be at any point, you know, from beginning to end, just that at the end, it has to be done. And, you know, maybe a balancing between, you know, as more trucks go in, the more it gets torn up, might be harder for the trucks, and then dealing with the people who are there too could end up becoming problematic also if their road's damaged too much. So that's, basically, it's lifting its call to do what is, what's best.
Any other thoughts?
No, just the same one. I just don't, I just, just not sure how this road is going to get built.
Well, again, it does, it does require that whatever gets done has to be done to city standards and to the satisfaction of the city engineer. So there's, there's oversight there that should be adequate in that sense.
It seems like the longer version kind of ensures that that road will be built almost separately than the building part of it by having the executed contract for construction, and it may put the peace of mind with the other residents that that is something that's going to happen versus like, will the PUD enforce it or something like that where we tell them that if it's, if it's granted with the longer version, it would really solidify that, that it will be responsible and not with a shorter version, it's like, well, the PUD would kind of, yeah, we're going to get it done. Where this is, the contract is there, the bond is there, the building is going to get done, and the developer can choose when it would get put in, but everything's in place for that timeframe. Where this, the shorter one is like, well, yeah, we'll get it. So this one, I would think that the homeowners of the PUD would be happier with. This seems to me more solidified and that it's going to get within the building.
Can I ask the city attorney a question? Thank you. How do you feel comfortable with the longer version?
I wrote it. I, you had a discussion at your meeting with staff about conditions of approval and, and about certificate of occupancy as a deadline, and I think we had a discussion about how that oftentimes is not a good insurance to get something done, that people violate it. As Richard said, the violation is something that under seventeen eighty-four of the code, if in fact occupancy occurs before the road improvement is done, they get a notice of violation letter saying, "You have ten days to give us an assurance of compliance, and if you don't, you can get a citation, and if they don't give you an assurance of compliance, then there's a process where they get a citation and go to municipal court, and it can be up to a thousand dollars a day." That's kind of a stick, kind of a process, you know, we're threatening you with enforcement action if you don't comply with the terms and conditions of your approval. So if you think that's adequate, then go with the shorter version. If, what I was trying to do was be responsive to the discussion you had and simply provide for an alternative means, not uncommon in land development, to see a contract for the construction of a required improvement. Those words are common terms when you need to build infrastructure for some project, and financial security, generally, it's one hundred and ten percent of the, of the amount, and for, until the construction is completed, then there's usually a ten percent maintenance. So I didn't reinvent the wheel there, that's just common language. So that's, that's your options.
Thank you.
It almost seems like one is proactive and one is reactive. It's kind of how that feels to me.
On the other hand, the developer is not unfamiliar with Lincoln City, he's part of projects here, so he has a history in town. Secondly, you know, having a good street lead to the apartment complex is a selling point in terms of running it out. So I could go along with the shorter version.
Any other thoughts?
What's our city attorney wrote the longer one?
I would like to go with that.
Will all entertain a motion?
Which exhibit A is which?
I think if, if the motion were to be to approve the final order, such and such, with, depending what motion you want to make, the, the longer version or shorter version of condition one, that would be sufficient.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve. I would like to make a motion to approve the amended version of the planning and development and partial subdivision replat to follow the longer written version, the conditions of approval.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Mr. Chair, actually, you need to do roll call.
Okay, roll call, please.
Griffiths?
No.
Hampton? Yes. Hoagland?
Yes.
And Long?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries.
All right. Looking for a request of approval for the joint meeting with the city council, the minutes of August fourth, twenty fifteen. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Mr. Chair, just one comment on those. So, let me get those. On the second page, Commissioner Griffiths had a request to clarify a statement that he made. It's in the third paragraph, it's a third sentence where it should now say, "Commissioner Griffiths asked if there was any consideration for prohibiting left turns off Highway one oh one where there is no center turn lane." So he just wanted to clarify that, and that's it.
I have a.
Yes.
I just, maybe this doesn't matter, I don't know it does, if it does or not, but for the August eighteenth minutes, I believe.
We're not there yet.
Okay.
I'm just doing August fourth first. So with the August fourth, twenty fifteen, a request for approval with the changes to the minutes.
I move to approve the draft minutes for August fourth, two thousand and fifteen.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none?
And that's with the change, right?
That's with the change, correct. All righty, and now may our request for approval for the August eighteenth minutes of twenty fifteen.
I just have a, can I comment? Thank you. On, it's PDF page nine, so I'm not sure. Let me see what. It was the first paragraph, I'm just, with my comments, I just, from the hint and comments regarding requests for applicants to consider, please add to number four, no work on weekends, and then add the words "and on federal holidays."
Do I hear a motion to approve with the changes to the minutes of August eighteenth?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none?
I'm abstaining, of course.
Turn it back over to you.
Thank you, sir. Good job. Now we're going to do public comments on non-agenda items or matters not involving a public hearing. Please limit comments to three minutes per speaker. Speakers should keep in mind that they are being broadcast on live television. A comment on a non-agenda item, seeing none. All right, it's now six twenty-five PM. The public hearing for file PUD two thousand and fifteen dash oh three is open. This public hearing concerns a request to amend the final master plan for the Lincoln Shore Star Resort planned unit development to allow eating or drinking establishment as an additional permitted use on LSSR Lot sixty-one. Parcel proposed for amendment is on the south side of northwest Fortieth Street, west of Highway one oh one. Subject property is Zoned RC Recreation Commercial. The applicant is Stephen W. Abel of Stoll Reeves LLP, and the property owner is Bank of America, N.A. Commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. First, does any member of the commission wish to declare an ex parte contact, conflict of interest, or bias in this matter?
No.
Challenges. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of a commissioner to participate in this matter? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the commission to this, to, to consider this matter? None. Statements. Staff, would you please read the following?
Actually, I don't have it. Kate, can you read it, or?
Read it if you.
The following statements are required to be made at the commencement of the hearing pursuant to city code and ORS one nine seven seven six three sub five. The staff will now read a list of the applicable substantive criteria for the decision.
Lincoln City Municipal Code, section seventeen point five two point zero three zero access requirements, section seventeen point five two point one hundred landscape requirements, section seventeen point five two two twenty tree protection removal, seventeen point five two two ten planned unit developments, sixteen point zero eight zero five zero subdivision approval authority, sixteen point twelve subdivision design standards, seventeen point two oh multifamily residential zone.
All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive criteria previously listed or such other criteria in the plan or land use regulations which the person believes applies to the decision. However, if raised an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to Luba, the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Therefore, if the applicant raised constitutional other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow a decision maker to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court, prior to end of this hearing, any person who participated may request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence, or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence.
Excuse me, I made a mistake on what I read, actually. I said it was multifamily residential, actually seventeen point two eight recreation commercial zone, not multifamily.
We're at number seven. Would you like me to proceed?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
We're at number seven on the script. Should I continue?
Thank you. Before the staff presents a report, I'd like to summarize the public hearing procedures which have been adopted by the planning commission of city council, a brochure outlining procedures at the entrance of the city, of the council chambers. Generally, the order of proceedings will be as follows: preliminary matters and required statements, staff report, questions of staff, applicant's presentation. Those in favor of the application, those opposed, rebuttal by applicant, requests of continuances or to leave the record open, close of the hearing, close of the record, request to submit written argument, deliberations, and decision. The city has established some time limits. The applicant will have fifteen minutes and may reserve up to five minutes of that time for rebuttal. After the applicant testifies, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the planning commission has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Please present the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an application for amendment to a subdivision. This is an application for an amendment to a subdivision, or not a subdivision, a planning and development. Just to set the scene, um, it's the Lincoln Shore Star Resort subdivision. Um, in this slide, you'll see Highway 101 curving in from the right down to the bottom, Logan Road going up near the middle, going north and south. Safeway is here. The casino is here. The Lincoln Shore Star Resort starts a little bit north of 39th down here and includes, uh, the motels along the oceanfront, the parking lots for the casino, the casino itself, and the gated, uh, residential area. The area that's involved in, in, uh, tonight's application is this lot down at the bottom here. Um, Lot 61. The, the PUD was originally approved back in, uh, 1990, and, uh, there have been a number of changes, uh, to it since then. The first was putting in the Desert Storm Memorial. Then, uh, a number of the lots were sold to the Confederated Tribes, the Celest Indians, and they developed those properties with, uh, the casino and with, uh, the parking lots that, that serve the casino. The, the then property owner, not the current one, but, uh, back in 2001, Mark Hem Street was the property owner, applied for a number of other amendments, including, uh, some that relate to this particular lot. Specifically, he asked for, uh, to be allowed, uh, some different uses, and, uh, in addition to the condominiums and apartments that were originally, uh, allowed under the, uh, the PUD, it also was, uh, allowed motels and timeshares. I should point out that, that what's being asked for is for be allowed to have eating or drinking establishments on this lot. That is a use that's allowed. This property is Zoned RC, uh, at least, uh, much of it is, I can show you, in fact, uh, the zoning, uh, the, the sort of orange color is recreation commercial. The lot that we're talking about is here, and it runs over to this line over here, so a little bit of it in this red, this red area is general commercial. And you can see to the south of the, the lot we're talking about, Lot 61, there's some single-family residential and some commercial in this area over here. So, uh, the, the request is to be allowed to have, uh, as I said, eating or drinking establishment in, on the property. Um, and no other changes is, are requested for the, for the PUD. It's just to allow, uh, this additional use beyond what, what is already allowed. The, uh, major issues or the major criteria that have to be addressed are the, are the PUD approval criteria, and, uh, the first of those is that the, um, I got ahead of myself, but you've got, these are the allowed uses and request additional use of eating or drinking. The first criterion is that the, uh, the proposal has to be substantially compatible with existing development in the, in the surrounding area. As I said, it's commercial to the north and east. Vacant to the west, that, there's a, a second vacant lot there, that this property is vacant, the one to the west is vacant. That one to the west is, is largely a wetland, and it should, it will stay vacant. And then residential and commercial to the south. So you can see, uh, this, this is the lot that's largely wet one. Uh, there's residential down here to this area, and then there's commercial, there's an office building over here with the related parking lot. You've got the gas station, Rite Aid, and, uh, that shopping center, and the, uh, casino parking lot, and there's another vacant property here that's not part of the PUD.
Richard, where's the western boundary to Lot 61?
Where's the boundary of 61?
The western boundary to Lot 61?
Right here.
Right there, okay.
Um, so, um, there's a number of things that we normally look at in, in determining whether it's substantially compatible. Uh, the, the major one is the proposed use, and here we're talking about a use that's, that's allowed in the zone, um, and, uh, it has, uh, the resort character that, that the PUD as a whole was originally intended for. And, uh, the, uh, actually, without the PUD, if there had been no PUD, this, there's no question this use would have been allowed there. It's just looking at the PUD now. Uh, we've got the, this criterion, if it's compatible with surrounding land uses. There is a bit of a, a topographic break between the residential properties to the south, and it dips down a little bit into the properties, so there's, there is a little , uh, topographic difference that helps to separate them, those uses. But, you know, there, it is a commercial use, and the butt's residential, and there's always, uh, going to be some tension, I guess, between the residential uses and commercial uses on adjacent properties, but, uh, it's been zoned commercial for many, many years, and, uh, presumably, when people bought, uh, they were aware of what, what they were buying next to, that it was, that it was commercial. And, uh, there's no, no proposed changes in density, uh, or in lot size or anything like that, and, uh, so it's, it, it fits with, in staff's opinion, it fits with what was intended to be there, it fits with what's allowed in the zoning, and, uh, whatever, uh, conflict there might be can be mitigated, presumably through the, when we go through site plan review for whatever the, uh, whatever's applied for, in terms of building or the restaurant or, or, uh, drinking establishment there. The next criterion is that the, the number of years proposed for completion of the development or, or each phase is reasonable, um, and they're not talking about phasing here at all. Um, this is a site that's been vacant for 25 years, ever since the, the PUD was approved, and, uh, it's, no phasing, but, uh, there is site plan approval, and, and as, as I said earlier, site plan review is good for two years, uh, so if something doesn't happen in that two years, they could apply for an extension, but, but, but this means is that normally things will happen, uh, fairly quickly, and, uh, shouldn't be any undue, uh, or it wouldn't be unreasonable, uh, the proposals to basically get approval, and then, uh, relatively quickly, I think they'll come for site plan approval. Uh, the next criterion is that construction will not cause unreasonable impacts in the surrounding area. You know, construction always does cause some impact, but the question is whether it's unreasonable or not. We do have things that, uh, protect against that. There are provisions requiring traffic control, uh, noise control, uh, there will be a requirement for getting grading and filling permit for anything like that needs to be done, so we, uh, we have some control over them that will have the effect of minimizing, uh, impacts to the extent as possible. As I said, there's always impacts from development, but the question is whether it's unreasonable or not. And, uh, again, through site plan review and then just the normal development process, we do have controls for dealing with that, for minimizing those. Then, uh, question is, the next criterion is whether the development will create unreasonable negative impacts in the area surrounding the, the development or in the city, and, uh, there will be, presumably, some increase in traffic on, uh, 40th Street, which is the street that runs along the north side of the property. There's no direct connection from there into the residential area, though. It, 40th goes out to 101 and then down into the rest of the, of the, uh, resort, uh, the Lincoln Shore Star Resort, and, uh, when that street was put in, the intent was to serve this property with, uh, you know, with its resort-type development. There actually would be timeshares or, or, um, apartments or condos would be there, and, uh, in, in this case, if this is approved, there presumably there will be a restaurant at some point. So, yeah, there will be some traffic impact, but it's, uh, um, it will be within, generally within the, the PUD rather than affecting the surrounding properties. And there will be some increase in noise, it going from a vacant lot to a lot where, uh, vehicles will come and go, and there can be, can be noise from a, a restaurant or drinking establishment. And, again, but again, that's something that can be dealt with to some extent in the, um, in the site plan review process in terms of imposing conditions then, and also through the enforcement process if, if, uh, things are unreasonable. And then, uh, another cri, uh, approval criterion is that the street water sewer drainage and drainage pretreatment, stormwater detention, and other similar facilities in the surrounding development and the city are, will be adequate, and basically, it's the utilities are, will be adequate. And the, the street exists, uh, there's a water line that exists, there's, there's available water main, uh, there's a sewer main that runs right through the property, um, and stormwater will be controlled, presumably it'll run down, uh, to the wetland, and there's, uh, there'll be requirements for detention and, uh, uh, water quality in terms of the runoff, uh, that would be imposed through site plan review, whatever development is proposed. And so, those, that, that's the main thing. Those are the main criteria that you have to deal with, so. Staff believes that the criteria are met and, uh, doesn't see anything, uh, any significant impediment to this proposal.
Any questions? Actually, before we get started, let, let, let me remind the commissioners that we're talking about amending the PUD to allow an eating and drinking establishment. We're not looking at a site plan review, so I, I don't believe we need to be concerned about drainage, traffic, noise, any of the other things. We will be concerned about when we're presented with the site plan review. Okay? Proceed.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir?
You're first.
I just have a short question. So the, um, the wetland, that's the next property, I believe, west of 61?
Property over here.
Yeah, it, and we're just calling it a wetland. Is it a designated wetland, or is it just wetland?
It's a significant wetland, so it can't be developed.
Thank you.
So what's, yeah, I'm curious, is what's standing the applicant has to make this request? One, and, uh, does the applicant need to get the approval of, of governing authority for the PUD, like a homeowners association?
No, they don't need to get, I answered the second question first. No, they don't need to get approval. They need to get your approval, but not from, uh, not from the overall, uh, uh, PD. As far as I know, there may, there may be something in the CCNRs, but that's between the, you know, the various property owners and the applicant. As far as the applicant's standing, they've got permission from the property owner to apply, so they've got, the, the property owner has signed off on this, so.
Where is Lincoln Shore Star Resort?
Where?
Yeah.
It's basically the casino area, okay. 50th Street up in the north, 39th at the, at the south end, except for those properties right along 39th. The Lincoln Shore Star Resort PUD starts just north of those, those properties on 39th. Doesn't include the Shell Station on the corner, but then, uh, these vacant lots, this is Lot 61, this is the wetland, the, the Chinook Winds Hotel, the casino, the parking lots, and this, uh, residential area are all part of the, the PUD. So, 50th, Logan Road, um, then down around the parking lots, and around down here to these, uh, to the north line of the, of the lots along 39th, and then out to the beach. That's the whole PUD.
Be deliberating on this?
Uh, okay. Are there any further questions of staff? Thank you, sir. May we have the applicant's presentation, please?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Steve Abel. I'm a lawyer. I'm a lawyer with the Stoll Reeves Office in Portland. My address is 900 Southwest Fifth Avenue, Suite 2600, Portland 97210, 204, I'm sorry. I'm here today representing the contract purchaser for this particular piece of property, and that purchaser has a contract with the Bank of America. Bank of America is the owner. Bank of America consented to this application in order to facilitate the transaction that my client is contemplating with the Bank of America. So that's why we're here today to ask you for this particular amendment. We think it's a pretty minimal amendment to the existing PUD. I think your staff presentation was very thorough in laying out the, the context in which this application is brought forward, as well as the criteria that you're to look at, and simply stated, this application is, uh, to apply for an additional use, that being a use of eating and a drinking establishment. It's a use that you find already in your general commercial zone, your recreational commercial zone, and the only reason this application comes before you is that the PUD doesn't have an inclusion of that particular use in the PUD itself, so we're simply asking to add that. Uh, when Richard went through the, um, uh, his, his, um, slides, he kind of skipped over the one about the uses that are already allowed on that site, and those uses include motels, uh, condominiums, apartments, so this site has already been given the kind of resort type of uses that could be on this particular property. So the property is sat for 25 years, and there's an opportunity for new investment in this property and in the city, frankly, by the contract purchaser, uh, if that, if the, if the PUD can be amended. Now, we recognize that there's another step to this process, which we're not ready to undertake at this point. We haven't developed particular plans, but that's a process of site design review, and in that site design review, we understand that there will be an analysis of landscaping, there will be an analysis of the existing vegetative cover on this particular property. We understand there'll be analysis of construction impacts, and we understand there'll be even questions about what's the sighting and how was the orientation of the particular building. I can tell you it is likely that the building would end up on the easterly end of the property just because of the topography. That topography drops off very quickly from the service station down, uh, down the hill, and then frankly, to the next lot, to the west, which, by the way, is, is on your listed wetlands, your local inventory, as a listed wetland. I can't imagine that that lot will ever be developed, given its current listing. Um, and that's not to say there aren't wetlands on this particular property that will need to be analyzed as well, as it gets closer and closer to that particular parcel. So what we think the application before you does is it takes a piece of property that's been resting fallow for 25 years. Uh, it brings in new investment into the community. Uh, it's a substantial purchase price, I can tell you that. Uh, and, and frankly, what it does is it allows for the kinds of uses that this PUD contemplated in the first place, the kinds of resort sort of uses for this property, and as I finally say, is we, we do know that we'll have to go through site design review and, and honor all of the provisions of your code, uh, and we believe we can do that. Uh, we don't have much doubt that we can get through that process and create a good site design on this particular property that would be a value, a value to the community. And so with that, I'll conclude and answer any questions you might have, and I'll reserve the remainder of my time for any rebuttal if necessary, uh, this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any questions, commissioners?
Does the new owner plan on development, other than the restaurant on that?
No, not at this time. That's not, um, not financially feasible. Please.
Just curious, um, would it be appropriate for you to tell us who the purchaser is? It's kind of strange having this-
Well, you know, I get that. I understand that, and, uh, you know, this isn't really about any particular development. I can tell you it's, it is, uh, it's a restaurant owner who's already in your community.
Um, the, is, is the seafood restaurant in the PUD, the existing Chinook Winds Seafood Restaurant?
Somebody else we have to get to.
I'm sorry, Richard.
Are you talking about the one in the-
The Chinook Winds Seafood Restaurant.
In the hotel?
No.
Food Grill.
The Seafood Grill. Is that in the PUD? And is the casino in the PUD?
Casino is within the boundaries of the PUD, although it's on, uh, land that's in the, uh, subject or rules anymore.
Okay, I was, I was getting at, there's two restaurants in that area, um, that's- Okay, I was, I was getting at, there's two restaurants in that area, drinking and eating establishments.
There's more than that.
But they're not in the PUD?
The restaurants in the casino are inside it, but like, there's no, and the restaurant in the hotel is inside the PUD.
I'm curious then, why, that sounds like the PUD already has eating and drinking.
Oh, the restrictions are lot-specific within the PUD. Lot sixty-one has this, this provision that I think probably way back when, somebody thought that that was going to be the ideal site for a motel slash condominium or something. Obviously, the market hasn't responded that way, and it still isn't responding that way.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, commissioners?
Would the buying out, you said the purchaser wishes to buy out this lot out of the PUD, would that then still make it part of the PUD, or is it now will be subject to its own commercial or zoning things outside of the PUD? Or are the other things are still within the PUD? Are they buying it and trying to remove it?
Right, the owner right now is Bank of America, who took it in foreclosure. And so it's owned by the bank, and it will remain in the PUD. It's in the bank, it's in the PUD as a bank. If this buyer ends up purchasing the property, it will stay in the PUD, and all we're asking for is the PUD to be amended, amended for one particular use.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Do we have any testimony in support of the application? Do we have a sign-up sheet?
The sign-up sheet is blank.
Sign-up sheet is blank. Is there any testimony in opposition to the application? No.
Or letter?
Yes, we've read the letter. Is there any testimony from representatives of public agencies? Obviously, no need for rebuttal by the applicant. ORS Section one nine seven dot seven six three, Paragraph six A, states that upon request, the commission must either grant a continuance for no less than seven days, or hold the record open for no less than seven days to permit any participant an opportunity to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence. Does any person who participated desire to request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence? Or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence?
Just, just under that statement, it says if no, and then there's another statement to read.
Does the applicant waive the opportunity to submit final written argument after the close of the record, as provided ORS Section one nine seven seven six three, Paragraph six E? Thank you.
I just point out that we skipped the, and it's, apologize, it's not highlighted on the script. It says, because no continuance has been requested, and no request has been made to hold the record open, is there a motion to close the public hearing and the record?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, the public record.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the public record is closed, public hearing is closed. All right, does the, have any comments or, do you guys have any comments concerning legal issues?
I really don't have anything to say on this one, except maybe to point out to the question that was just asked. This is not like the prior PUD amendment, which was removing the property. This is actually an amendment, the property that's concerned is staying in the PUD.
Which specific to Lot sixty-one?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, the matter is returned to the table for deliberations and recommendations. Any comments, gentlemen?
I wrote down thirteen businesses that serve food or drinking while sitting here. That's within walking distance. Thirteen places that you can get food hot, served, and now we're asking for another one or two. And with the possibility of Taco Bell being a fourteen.
We're looking at, which, Lincoln City's been a little slow in growth lately, and the economy's getting better. We're creating job opportunities for people that are unemployed now. We're creating more money coming into town. It's actually a good area in the public, or into a commercial area.
If the, the owner is already in our community, likely they would close their current location and move it to this location, possibly?
Possibly, we don't know that.
I don't know much, but... I don't know.
Steve?
Question of the attorney?
Please.
Well, as with the prior PUD approvals that you've had, PUD amendments you've had before, you have the ability to impose conditions. But those conditions need to be geared to achieve compliance with the criterion. So before you say, let's impose a condition, first acknowledge which criterion it is you feel that it's necessary to impose a condition to achieve compliance.
I'm saying about neighborhood, who have bought homes there, who have built homes there, were aware of the PUD, probably assume that a property would be used to build condominiums. That's another one of the others. I think being next to a condominium, neighbor to a condominium, is very different than being in a neighborhood.
I believe that hotel was also listed as a permitted use?
Yeah. What possible condition could we impose that would affect the statement, eating or drinking establishment?
Southern border of the property that would help visually, you know, protect the residences there from the restaurant, and also serve as some kind of sound barrier.
Is that more appropriate for a site plan review?
That's my question, I don't know.
That would be my guess. Does anybody else have a feeling?
I would agree.
I'll be very interested in part of the conversation when we get to a site plan Comments?
I guess just one, one more thought. This one just seems difficult, only because we don't know what it is that, that it's going to be. There are wide varieties of drinking establishments and restaurants, or fast food, or whatever, whatever it is. And so, without knowing what it is that we're approving, it makes this difficult.
I guess I'd point out again, that there, there are already permitted uses. There's a list that Richard went over of the uses that are already permitted there, and this is one of the existing permitted uses in this zone.
Could it be, you talk about, if, right now it's permitted, they could build a hundred-unit motel. You talk about traffic in and out, and the people, you know, so I actually think a restaurant or eating areas would be actually better off there than a hotel or condominiums.
Do we have a motion?
Well, first off, I think they do meet all the criteria, so there's, I don't know what conditions we can put on it. I'll make a motion to approve the change to add eating and drinking establishments on the Lot sixty-one.
PUD.
PUD.
Second? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
You need to do it by voice, by.
Roll call. Thank you.
Hoagland?
No.
Hinton?
Yes.
Griffiths?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
And Robinson?
Yes.
Shinkarries?
Mr. Hoagland, would you please state your reason for the no vote?
I don't feel that another establishment for eating and drinking, to amend the unit, to have that, is necessary in that area.
Motion carries.
I think the next thing on, there is a number nineteen on the script.
This is a tentative decision of the planning commission staff, and will prepare a final order for adoption at the next available meeting. Old business, we have a follow-up discussion on form-based codes webinar.
Okay, I just wanted to, if you throw things open for discussion, the reason, it may not have been made very clear, the reason we had that webinar last time was a lead-in to the Nell Scott Gap project that we're working on. And that will possibly involve the creation of some form-based code language for that area. And we brought that up as, primarily as an introduction to what form-based codes are, and the process that's gone through. In the, in the course of the Nell Scott Gap project, we're going to be having at the end of the month, I guess it is, the end of this month, a design week, where there'll be a process of developing a vision for, for what, what the community wants to see developed there, and how it's going to look, and that kind of thing. And then come up with a, a plan resulting from that for that area, and then go through the process, but, you know, the normal adoption process. So we just wanted you to be familiar with form-based codes. One of the biggest things about a form-based code is that vision, is the, the vision is, is what you're trying to achieve through the codes, rather than just saying, we want retail here, and then rather than saying things like, the building has to, you know, has to have this roof line, or that kind of thing, it's really looking at the whole relationship between the built environment, the roads and streets, connectivity of the whole area, and that kind of thing. So it's, it's, the whole point is to have a vision, and then implement that vision through the code process, and create, create a neighborhood as a result of that. One of the nice things about form-based codes is they're very flexible in terms of, they're not cookie cutter kinds of things, so they, you can really tune them in on the neighborhood that they're addressing, so that you have something very specific. And, you know, it looks at, there's, there's what's called the regulating plan, which is exactly what you want to see in terms of the relationship of buildings to the streets, their height, and that kind of thing. And then there's a whole bunch of other things about, you know, standards for blocks, for streets, for the streetscape, for building placement, parking placement, building height, and so on and so forth. But it's, it's pretty comprehensive. And one of the good things about it is, when you, when you have a, a form-based code, it gives certainty to, to developers, and it can streamline the process by not having to go through some of the other steps that you have to go through, because it's very clear, here's what you have to do, boom, and you're good to go. Some cities would have done them, have eliminated, like a separate site plan review process or something, it's just, you know, you review it, people get, submit an application, does it meet the standards? Yes, you're good, go get a building permit. So I know if you have questions, concerns, comments about form-based codes, we'll be doing more, you'll be becoming more familiar with form-based codes as time goes on in the near future. We do have some elements of it in, in some of our things, like Olivia Beach, the developer basically imposed a form-based code on himself, and that's how it was approved, with the specific standard. So even though the houses vary tremendously in their, in what they look like, they all meet the, the form standards, how close they are to the street, what kinds of things, like porches, that kind of thing, roof, roof angles, and so on. And as you can see there, created a very cohesive feeling, and a very cohesive neighborhood there. And we have some aspects of it in our design standards, but again, this is more systematic, I guess, and more comprehensive. Ultimately, I would hope that we can migrate citywide to something form-based codes, and not just focus on use, but focus on what we want the community to look like. And that's the real thing, it's, it's what do you want your community to look like, not what use do you want here, what use do you want here? You still look at uses, but it's not, use is not the driving thing, it's, it's what, what the community's going to look and feel like, and how's it, how's it going to tie together.
What is the next step in terms of this driving towards, you're talking about, is form-based code something that we impose, we vote on it, we decide to do it, or it's a piecemeal deal?
The first piece is the visioning process, that we're going to be going through at the end of the month. And that's a lot of community involvement, and a lot of community outreach, not just saying, you know, come and talk to us in a hearing, but actually going out and involving the community, having a lot of activities to, to elicit what people want. And then, from that, develop a vision, and sort of an idea of what, what we're aiming for, and get feedback on that from the same people. And then, from that, we can, we can develop a code, and then go through, it can be done through a more informal process, but then there has to be a formal process too, of planning commission hearings and city council hearings for adoption. But one of the, the big points of it is that it'd be a very open, very transparent process with a lot of involvement.
Do you have a vision of the timeline before we actually potentially would opt the form-based code?
You know, I haven't been looking much beyond the, the visioning process, that I said, like I said, we're starting at the end of the month. But it will be a matter of months, a few months, rather than like a year out, or something like that, it'll be, it'll be a matter of a few months.
Yeah, I just, I like how you can use form-based codes to actually blend in, instead of such hard-drawn lines, with zoning. It works better, I believe, with neighborhoods, residential versus commercial, actually blends back into it a little better, I think.
Yeah, a lot of things you can do, like, I'm just throwing this out as an example, it's not something that's on the, on the table or anything. Let's, let's say, with regard to Nell Scott, you like the look of the Nell Scott Strip, and you want to see that extended on the other side of Thirty-second, or on the other side of one oh one, have that same type of development. You can draft something to make that happen, or to let it happen, I guess, but to, to guide development in that, in that manner, if that's what the community wants. And so you can get, you can get that neighborhood character, you can build on the existing character, if you like, if you want to, if you want to do that. There are other places where it might be appropriate to, we want to revitalize an area, you say, well, we don't like what's there now, and in the future, whatever gets built there should be like something else, and you define what, what that wants to be. So you can build on the existing character, you can decide a different character that you want, and it just comes down to how the, the community wants to proceed.
I think that's what appeals, is the fact that it is the character, the community that's already present. that's already present, that I think is a very good example of that.
Just want to say thank you for this little more in-depth discussion about how it relates to Lincoln City, and how we might be able to use it in the future. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Richard?
I don't know if you have any other questions or comments, if you want to discuss any aspects of it, you know, here, we can do it in future meetings, however you want to do it. And then, of course, there'll be the design week process, I guess, at the end of the month, beginning of the end of the month. I think it starts at the 30th, and then it goes on for several days after that.
Great. Thank you. Do we have any new business? Says here, non-scheduled. Reports and comments, Community Development Director?
I think I've basically made my comments.
Thank you.
We've got actually a lot of fairly planning-intensive stuff over the next year or two. We've got the Nelscott Gap project, we've got comprehensive planning, we've got park plan coming, master plan. And the council, in a workshop last night, said they wanted to come up to revise master plan for the villages at Cascadehead, so that's another big planning project. It's sort of a planning-rich time coming up right now, rather than just dealing with, we're calling it, planning, or dealing with approving development. We're actually doing, we'll be doing a lot of planning over the next couple of years.
Do I need to upgrade my reading glasses?
You can do that.
Install a USB port in there. Ernie?
Have anything specific? I just tell you, I appreciate the difficulty of reviewing PUD amendments when you don't actually have a specific plan in front of you, and you're dealing with kind of this worst-case scenario idea. You've just had two amendments where you don't really have a precise, you don't have something tied up, you just have a digital use, or the removal of property in one instance, and adding a use. I can appreciate the difficulty sometimes, but I think you made the right decisions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comments? And are there any public...
The end.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm speaking. I just want to say that, just following what the city attorney was just saying about how difficult some of our decisions can be, is that I'm hoping, and maybe somebody can help me with this, but when we get into the comprehensive plan, which should be, I hope, soon, then, I know you're too busy right now, but will that in fact help us with what I'm thinking about, I'm calling like strategic planning? Because what it feels like in this seat right here, when we're getting projects to look at and decisions to be made on what almost feels like pop-up kinds of things. And I don't know, like, if we put an apartment here, and replacing single-family housing, let's say, then where does that same number of single-family housing go? And how much do we need? And how many, you know, it's just kind of, it feels a little loose for me. And just, and another example is if we do the decision we made tonight about allowing another eating or drinking establishment, when Commissioner Hogan just said that there were 13, and with Taco Bell, there'll be 14, all in one walking distance. I'm just looking for a balance here, and I'm having difficulty in trying to sort all that out. I know we do these things on individual requests, but the bigger picture is what's missing for me, and how we...
The comprehensive planning process is all about, it's about setting that bigger picture, and defining where we want the city to go over the course of the next 20 or 30 years.
The difference is, as Richard stated earlier, one is current planning. You are reacting in the context of a specific application. It is reactionary. It is completely what is brought to you to consider. I agree, if there's too many restaurants in an area, then one of those restaurants may fail, but that's not what the request is before you. The policy matter, the comprehensive planning issue of, do we have enough apartments? Or do we have enough single-family homes? How does this help us with the inventory? Does this hurt? That issue is a broader issue. Same thing with restaurants and other, I don't know that anyone's broken down restaurant need the same way they've broken down, you know, need for certain types of housing units under Gold Ten, but certainly, you know, the success or failure strategically depends on whether or not anybody's thought about those things, and that's your opportunity to do it, is in the comprehensive planning process.
Good. When do we start that?
Looking forward to it. Great. All right. Are there any public comments? None. Future agenda items and next meetings. The next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, September 15th, at 6:00 p.m. We'll be listening to Olivia Beach Phase 3 Final Master Plan and tentative subdivision plan, Transportation System Plan, adoption hearing, Natural Hazards Plan. That'd be a presentation by Mr. Nicholson. Great. Looking forward to that. And adoption of final order as the VRD License Appeals Board. And then Thursday, October 1st, 2015, at 3:00 p.m., we'll be having the Nelscott Gap Plan Briefing. And that's a joint meeting with the city council.
Is there any way to change that time? I'd love to be there, but there's no way I can do it 3:00 p.m.
That's with the council pick, unfortunately, we're...
So I need to email the mayor, complain?
We are adjourned.
It's Jordan spinning me up. Jordan, next one's.